Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel to gavel coverage of town and school board meetings to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack New Hampshire Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.
And whenever you guys are ready, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the March 31st, 2021 zoning board of adjustments meeting. The next meeting will be on April 28th, 2021, which will be at seven o'clock PM as it is today, and will also be done virtually via Zoom. Before we get started, I do have a script to read in. As Chair of the Merrimack Zoning Board of Adjustment, due to the COVID-19 crisis, in accordance with the Governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are (A) providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen in and if necessary participate in the meeting through dialing either of the following phone numbers, which are 1-312-626-6799, or 1-929-205-6099. Our meeting ID is 994-2365-1685. Meeting may also be viewed on Merrimack TV Channel 20, or the Merrimack TV webpage, which is merrimacktv.com. When public comment is opened by the chair, press *9 on your phone to raise your hand in order to be recognized. Once called upon, press *6 to unmute your audio and present your testimony. B, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided in the meeting agenda posted on the Town of Merrimack's website at merrimacknh.gov/ziining-dashboard. C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone is having a problem with access, please email rprice@merrimacknh.gov. D, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event that public is unable to access this meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call, and we're going to start the meeting by taking attendance via roll call. So I'll go first. Rich Coniskew, Chair of the Board. Patrick?
(pause)
Do you want to unmute yourself?
Yep, sorry, I was going between two screens, lost my mouse. Patrick Dwyer, Vice Chair, and I am alone in the room.
Oh, I as well am alone in the room. Thank you, I forgot that part. Rodney?
Rod Beckley, full member, alone in the room.
Lynn?
Lynn Christensen, full member and alone in the room.
Ben?
Ben Niles, full member, alone in the room.
Alright. Excellent, thank you. And Rodney, do you by chance have the preamble?
I do. Good evening to those in attendance and watching at home. For the benefit of those who have not previously attended a zoning board hearing, the procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. However, the Chair may change their order at their discretion. The Board will treat all petitioners, their representatives, abudders, and others interested parties fairly and with respect. The petitioner will be asked to give an overview of their petition and read through the responses of the criteria applicable to their case, allowing for the Board to ask questions after each item. State law and local ordinances establish the criteria that must be met in order for the Board to grant approval to a petition, and it is the petitioner's responsibility to demonstrate that they have met each criterion. Following the presentation, the Chair will open the floor for public comment, either in favor or opposed to the request. If necessary, an opportunity for rebuttal will be offered to the petitioner and the public. However, discussion will not be allowed to devolve into back and forth arguments. All comments shall be made directly toward the Chair. Should a question be asked, the Chair will pose the question to the petitioner. Afterward, the Chair will close the public hearing, and the Board will deliberate and vote on the petition. At this time, please silence all mobile devices.
Alright, so moving on to the first petition. We have Colby Param, petitioner-owner, variance under Section 3.05 the zoning ordinance to permit a detached garage 8.6 feet from the side property, whereas 15 feet is required, and 20 feet from the rear property, whereas 40 feet is required. Parcels located at 8.5 Severance Bridge Road and the R1 Residential by Soils and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 2A, Lot 20-02, case ZBA 2021-03. And who will be speaking on behalf of this petition?
Colby Param.
Oh. And is there anyone else that's going to be speaking with you tonight, Mr. Param?
No, just myself.
Alright. In that case, can you raise your right hand? And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Alright, thank you so much. Please tell us about what you're looking to do.
I'm looking to add a detached garage to my property. With the plans I submitted, it shows in the last couple of years, I put a pool in the backyard and a few other things, and it's kind of the only spot where I can really fit it in to make it work, and I know it's within these setbacks that are there, so that's why I'm here today.
And if you could, just walk us through the five points of the variance, and just stop at the end of each one, so that we can ask questions if we have any?
Yep, you're gonna have to give me one second. I need to just get that piece of paper. Talking about what I submitted to you with the application.
Correct.
Says in Part 1, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because I don't believe that it alters the character of the neighborhood or threaten the public health, safety, or welfare of the community.
Alright. Thank you. Does anyone on the Board have any questions regarding the first point? Alright, please continue.
The spirit of the ordinance is observed because the lot size is much smaller than the normal 2.3 acres that's normally required for the town. It's just shy of an acre. With it only having 150 feet of frontage, it makes it really difficult for me to put this in without encroaching within that setback on two different sides of my property.
Alright, thank you. Any questions from the Board? Alright, please continue.
Granting the variance would do substantial justice because it would provide garage and storage, which is within compliance of all the other present use of the property and the surrounding properties.
Any questions on that? Alright, thank you. Please continue.
Granting the variance would not diminish the values of the surrounding properties because the proposed building would maintain the character of the neighborhood, where two of the three abudders have structures within five feet of the property lines, and proposed structures will comply with the use of the property and the neighborhood.
Any questions from the Board? Alright, you can go ahead and move on to unnecessary hardship.
Okay, owning to the following special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, explain how no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of the provision of the property. I'm kind of going back to what I had talked about before, about the property only being just under an acre, and being the minimum of 150 feet of frontage makes it pretty much next to impossible for me to be able to do this without encroaching a setback. I believe it's a reasonable one because it's similar to all the other properties in the neighborhood with less than an acre of property, with their having structures that are also kind of within that setback limit.
And I think that definitely meets the criteria for unnecessary hardship. This is certainly something that we get a lot of here on the zoning board. So I guess with that, does anyone on the Board have any questions about this petition at all?
No.
Do not.
Alright. Mr. Param, before I open this up to the public, are there any questions or comments you'd like to make?
No, I have none at all. I think you guys have been pretty helpful with me through this process and understanding kind of what I needed to do to satisfy this for you guys, and I really don't have any issue.
Alright. Well, thank you very much for that. So what I'm going to go ahead and do is open up the public portion of the hearing. So if anyone is looking to speak either in favor or against this petition, please dial in and hit *9, which will raise the hand and let us know that you're looking to speak. While that is happening, we did receive a comment from an abutter. And so I was just going to go ahead and read this in. So Francis Grassi and Lotta Grassi from 15 Severance Bridge Road mentioned, "We have received an invitation to view a virtual public meeting in regard to an application of an owner, Colby Param, to get a residential permit to build a detached car garage on his property. We have no problem with a permit for Mr. Param to build a garage. We wish them good luck with the decision. We are not going to make a part of a meeting." So they are definitely in favor of the garage, which is good. It's always nice to hear from the public. And I'll give it another minute. Again, if you're looking to speak either in favor or against this petition, please dial in and hit *9 to let us know you're looking to speak. Alright, I'm not seeing any movement from phones, so I'll go ahead and close the public portion of this petition, and I ask the Board to deliberate, make a motion.
So, Mr. Chair, I mean, this is pretty straightforward. You look at it, I mean, the neighbor that's closest, their driveway actually is, there's a rock wall that splits them, you know, it's, you know, we see this all the time with non-conforming lots around the town, so I don't see any issue with this. I'm actually going to make a motion to approve Colby Param, petitioner-owner, variance under Section 3.05 the zoning ordinance to permit a detached garage 8.6 feet from the side property line, whereas 15 feet is required, and 20 feet from the rear property line, whereas 40 feet is required. The parcel's located at 8.5 Severance Bridge Road in the R1 Residential by Soils and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 2A, Lot 020-02, case number ZBA 2021-03.
I'll second.
Motion made by Patrick, seconded by Lynn in favor. Patrick, are you in favor?
I am in favor.
Lynn, are you in favor?
I'm in favor.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Rodney, are you in favor?
Yes.
I as well am in favor, so 5-0-0. The variance is granted, and just as a reminder, Mr. Param, that there's a 30-day window where somebody could appeal this decision. But that being said, congratulations and good luck.
Okay, just one more question for you. So we'll have to wait that 30-day appeal period before I can actually apply for a permit, right? Just to make sure no one has any complaints?
No.
I'll address it.
Yeah.
You do not have to if you pursue. At this point, it's at your own risk, so somebody could, in theory, on day 30 come forward and appeal, then we can put one hold. But you are free to go down to building tomorrow once we send out the decision letter and apply for your permit.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, I've talked to all my neighbors, and they're all on board with it, or I wouldn't even gotten, taken it to this point, so I'm going to move forward. I appreciate you guys sitting down with me.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright.
Good luck.
So moving on to the next petition is for Ron Dupont and Strife LLC, variance under Section 3.02, Note 6 of the zoning ordinance to permit a building canopy 18 feet from the zoning Webster, or from the, sorry, Daniel Webster right-of-way, whereas 22 feet was previously approved by variance. The parcels located at 406 Daniel Webster Highway and the C2 General Commercial and Aquifer Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts, tax map 5D-4, Lot 99, case ZBA 2021-04. And who is going to be speaking on this petition?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Matt Peterson with Keach-Norsham Associates here, representing Strife LLC for this proposed variance.
Alright, thank you. And Mr. Peterson, is anyone else going to be speaking with you tonight?
I think it's just Connor's down at the bottom, if he's got something to add into, but it should be mostly just me.
Alright. In that case, if you could just raise your right hand, and you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Alright, thank you so much. Please go ahead and tell us what you're looking to do.
So again, good evening, Matt Peterson with Keach-Norsham Associates. We were here last year to permit variance to allow the building on this site within 22 feet of the front setback. Unknown to me, and with 25 years' experience, I probably should have known this, but building canopies count towards the building setback in Merrimack, New Hampshire. So after we had gotten through the variance with you guys origin with the building, we then had Dennis Myers kind of finish up the architectural plans, and at that time, he had come up with, you know, an aesthetically pleasing building at this corner. It's obviously a smaller lot, we've tried to get something that fits in there nicely. This is office on the building on the bottom, so not retail, and then the residence on the second floor that's here. But like I said, unfortunately, I didn't realize that this awning would be part of the building setback. So we've submitted the application request to propose, and this, the canopy on both sides, but the variance is only needed for this one side that's here. We proposed a five-foot sidewalk out on this side here, obviously that's okay in the building setbacks, but we'd like to put a canopy about four feet over that sidewalk, obviously rain and snow and stuff like that. So when we got to the planning board, I brought this up to them, and when Robert had seen the architectural, said, "Yeah, Matt, you're in trouble on the canopy there on the front." So I had a discussion with the planning board and said, you know, "Listen, we can just remove the canopy, it's not the end of the world for us, but this is a pretty visible location, we're really trying to, we've worked hard, I mean, it's taken about a year now to come up with something that fits on here. I think we really have a nice product with some residential there and with an office below now." And they asked me to come back to you guys and ask for the variance on the canopy. So again, we had requested 22 feet to put the building back here, we're talking reducing it to 18 feet for the canopy, not for the building, but the canopy to be allowed to encroach at that four feet from there. Our arguments, and again, this was approved October 29th, 2020. I really am mad at myself for Kevin to come back here again. I like to try and do it one time and not do that, so bad on my part, but here we are anyway. The arguments for the variance, again, are very similar to the building that we had last year. The variance would not be contrary to the public interest because, again, the applicant is seeking relief from the required front setbacks on DW Highway, the DW high requirements for 50-foot front setback, the variance was granted to the applicant previous in October of 2020, reducing 50 foot to 22 feet. This request is reducing the 22 to 18 for an extended overhang along the building. This overhang will allow for safe travel into the building during inclement weather while creating an appealing facade. This 4-foot reduction does not diminish what was stated in the previous variance request, the building still will be in line, if not further back than structures along the west side of DW Highway. The Town of Merrimack will still have the ability to widen Daniel Webster Highway in the future with the previous given 20-foot right-of-way. As such, this 4-foot reduction is not contrary to the public interest on that. Let me go one at a time, I assume? You're muted.
Yeah, I just realized that. Yes, please.
So that would be the first one. The variance not being contrary to public interest.
Any questions from the Board? Alright, by all means, go into the spirit of the ordinance.
Spirit of the ordinance, based on the previous statements, that the setback reduction from the previous approved 22 to approximately 18 would be in line with or further back than existing business on DW Highway. The spirit of the ordinance is to ensure buildings are not crowding the highway and create a cohesive neighborhood. With this 18-foot setback, the proposed building will still be 38 feet plus or minus away from the current roadway. Most of, if not all, buildings in the area along Daniel Webster Highway are currently sitting this far back or closer to the highway, therefore, the applicant feels that granting this variance would stay within the spirit of the ordinance.
Actually, since we already approved the original variance, and this is just for the overhang, I'll let you just go ahead and breeze right through it.
Substantial justice would be done because, as stated above, this is one of the only lots on the west side of DW Highway that has deeded an extra 20 feet to the DW Highway right-of-way. This reduced lot size impedes possible development of parcels. Substantial justice would be done for the app by granted reduction in the setback to allow for an appealing building to be built. Number four, the surrounding values of the property would not be diminished because, again, the proposed construction of a 3,000-square-foot office building with the residents and units above should only help to increase the values of surrounding properties in the C2 district. A four-foot reduction in a canopy on a building in this area, I don't know how that would have any plus or minus effect on the surrounding properties' values and stuff like that. And then lastly, the little enforcement, literal enforcement of provisions of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. No fair and substantial relation exists between the general purpose of the ordinance provisions and the specific application of that provisions to the property. The relationship existed in the property, the ordinance is that the ordinance is looking to the future of DW high expansion and making sure users are located in appropriate distance from DW Highway. Again, based on that this is only going four feet over the sidewalk, we already have encroachments of a sidewalk further than that, this wouldn't, it makes sense on what they're trying to do in this area and putting the two together. And then the proposed use is a reasonable one, I think that's up to the Board here, but we feel a canopy over an existing sidewalk in New Hampshire is a reasonable request for this type of use. So I'll leave it at that and answer any questions. Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much. Does anyone on the Board have any questions regarding this particular petition?
Seems pretty straightforward, they just want to put a canopy over a sidewalk. I mean, I understand the legalese of it and having to do it from that perspective, but, you know, it's, you know, they're asking just to put a canopy up, you know, we already approved the building, so.
Absolutely, and I'm in complete agreement. I kind of feel bad that this is the way it is for a canopy, but certainly appreciate you coming back.
I mean, as long as the canopy's not going to have some scrolling neon sign on it, or something like, you know, but I mean, otherwise, just a plain canopy is fine.
Pretty sure if there was a scrolling sign, that would be a different variance.
That would be, exactly. Thanks, Rich.
Alright, so what I'll go ahead and do is open this up to the public, although I did just lose my participants window. There we go. If anyone is looking to speak either in favor or against this petition, please dial in and hit *9 to raise your hand. We'll give it about a minute. I think I'll be the first to admit that every time I do this, it feels like it's eight hours to me, even though it's only one minute, it just feels like it takes forever.
I think we've hit the minute.
You know what's funny? We haven't. But I'll go with it.
Did by my watch.
Well, nobody's called in or hit *9, so I'll go ahead and close it. Would someone be willing to provide a motion?
Yes. I make a note on the Ron Dupont petitioner and Strife LLC owner to approve the variance under Section 302, Note 6 of the zoning ordinance to permit a building canopy 18 feet from the Daniel Webster right-of-way, whereas 22 feet was previously approved by variance. The parcel's located at 406 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial, Aquifer Fire Conservation, and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts, tax map 5D-4, Lot 099, case number ZBA 2021-04.
I'll second.
And could you also please just add the staff recommendations to your motion? Ben?
At the very bottom.
Just say yes.
Yes.
It's basically just that the petitioner will obtain site plan approval from the planning board, which I think is pretty standard.
I second it.
Actually, Lynn seconded it, she beat you.
Oh, God.
So, Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Lynn, are you in favor?
I'm in favor. I'll let you do the next one, Rod.
Rodney, are you in favor?
Yes.
Patrick, are you in favor?
Yes.
I as well am in favor, so the motion was made by Ben, seconded by Lynn, and it's granted 5-0-0. So thank you again, Mr. Peterson, for coming down, and best of luck.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thanks, you too. Alright, and the final petition for the evening is Merrimack Parcel A LLC petitioner and Merrimack Park Place Condominium Owner, variance under Section 2.02.4D of the zoning ordinance to permit a mixed-use development conditional use permit to be sought from the planning board at a higher residential density than was originally approved by variance in 2015 on a lot in the I-2 Industrial District. The parcel's located at 10 Premium Outlets Boulevard in the I-2 Industrial Aquifer Conservation Districts and Willhead Protection Area, tax map 3C, Lot 191-02, case ZBA 2021-05. Before we start the presentation, the Community Development Office did receive a notice from a Michael Mills at 7 Arbor Street, and the statement in it was, "The public notice failed to, one, properly state the location for the proposed change. In response to that, that property is identified here. Two, did not properly identify the owners of the property. In response to that, that is also identified here. Three, did not state the higher residential density requested, and four, did not identify how the requested change in density would be implemented." Those really are planning board items. At this point in time, what we're going over is whether or not this use is permitted, not design or implementation. So I just want to make sure we address that, since we do feel, as well as the Community Development Office, that the abutter notice was appropriate based on RSA 6767. So with that being said, who will be speaking on this petition tonight?
Yes, my name is Thomas Leonard. I'm a lawyer at Nashua, in Nashua, at 29 Factory Street, and I'm here representing the applicant and owner. I also have with me that individual, Tom Monahan, who is the principal for the company that owns it, and we also have Dave Fenstermacher, who is with VHB, and they are the engineers and designers of the project. And I believe, and I'm not really sure because I can't see all the participants, but I believe individual Terry Field may be present. Terry Field works with the present apartment complex owner, and I'll have to give you some explanation of all of that, but he may be present as well, all to answer questions if they come up.
Terry Field is here.
Okay. So can I have everyone who will be speaking tonight, please state their names in for the public record? So thank you, Mr. Leonard.
Yep, this is David Fenstermacher from VHB.
Alright, thank you.
Tom Monahan, owner.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. And will anyone else be speaking tonight on this petition?
Uh, this is Terry Field from the apartments. I'm not sure if you can hear me.
I can. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
And I will need. All right, thank you. And I'll need all of you to raise your right hand. And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do.
Yes.
I do.
All right, thank you, everyone. All right, uh, so Mr. Leonard, if you want to go ahead and, uh, walk us through, uh, the variants tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and, and if you don't mind, I'd like to give you a sense of how we got here because I, this is a, a little bit of an unusual situation. Um, as, uh, as you probably know, but for those who don't, uh, the applicant seeks to complete a development that is on, uh, map three C lot one ninety-one two. And that lot is a twenty-acre parcel of land that was part of the original parcel of land for the Merrimack premium outlets. It is, it is actually considered an out parcel of the Merrimack premium outlet, uh, project. Um, in November of two thousand fifteen, we came before the board, the, the, uh, Merrimack zoning board to request permission for a mixed-use development that included residential uses. And, um, this tract of land is in the I two zone. Um, the I one zone permits mixed use and residential as a part of the mixed use. In the I two zone, it does not. So essentially we were asking for permission to include residential in our mixed-use development. Um, so the zoning board granted that variance. Um, at the time, we had a conceptual plan and I will show you this, that plan in a moment, but, um, at the time we had a pers- a conceptual plan and we really didn't have all of the details and we explained that, uh, it was conceptual and we were gonna go forward. Um, and the next step after zoning variance was to get permission by the planning would then review all the details, including the density. Uh, well, that happened, um, and actually we went through the CUP process. Uh, we got a permission for a mixed-use development that included residential. And, uh, Mr. Monahan and his team, uh, did some marketing. And the short story is we've had to go through a number of changes in the plan for many different reasons, maybe with demand and destruction. The reason that we are here now is we, so right now, um, we have a conditional use permit and we have a site plan permit that include, um, a substantial portion of the project. But we are here to request permission to change one, uh, component. And essentially what we were asking is that, um, the office space, uh, and some of the office space and we can give be important, some of the office space is being, uh, let go or abandoned in favor of additional residential, uh, apartments and luxury apartments, uh, as we had talked about right from the very beginning. Um, so the, the initial plan uh, showed a concept that had a hundred forty, and I'm going to give you rough numbers just to give you a sense of things. Approximately a hundred forty thousand square feet of retail. Uh, thank you, David. This is the original concept plan that, uh, that we presented at the first zoning variance application. And you can see that there is, uh, some retail, there's about a hundred sixty thousand feet of office space. There's a hu- about a hundred thousand feet of hotel space. Approximately one hundred forty-five thousand feet of residential space. And then there was a very substantial parking garage in the northeast northwest corner, um, for eleven hundred fifty-two spaces. Um, after we reworked that and after we managed and understood the market better, we went, as I say, to the planning board for a CUP and actually received a CUP permit. And presently, uh, what Dave Fenstermarker is showing you is the plan that has a CUP, uh, permission. And, um, and you'll see basically we've modified things to uh, address the demand and the change in demand. And, and so now there is a restaurant. It's roughly, uh, seventy-five or eight hundred, I'm sorry, seventy-five hundred or eight thousand square feet. I believe it's two hundred fifty seats. There's a hotel, um, about a hundred ten rooms, I believe it is. And it, this is all in the application, actually. And then you'll see in the, what is the lower left corner, um, that has become the residential that was proposed and approved. Now those three components that I just described are all approved. They have a site plan approved and they're actually under construction. And, uh, Mr. Field is with Lissesi cons- Lissesi Investment or Lissesi Developers. And they are the owners of the proposed apartment complex that is in that, um, southwest corner. Um, it is two hundred twenty-four residential upscale luxury apartments. Um, what has happened is obviously things have changed substantially, um, and we substantially in terms of the markets, um, and, and also substantially in terms of, uh, well, the COVID and, and the pandemic issues have, all of those things have contributed to substantial and material changes in, in the demand for these different, uh, components within the development. And the Lissesi group is interested in additional upscale lu- luxury apartments in the northwest corner. So our specific request here today is, well, actually, let me, let me back up slightly here too. So as we, and we've worked closely with, uh, the planning and zoning office and we appreciate all of their efforts in this regard. Um, and through the first, the, the first three components, we, as I say, those are approved and under construction. And when we went to discuss the planning, the, the planning of the last component of this, uh, development, um, both Tim Thompson and, uh, Mr. Price agreed or, or thought that we really should come back to the zoning board for clarification. Even though technically we were still talking about a mixed-use project, um, we agreed that it, it makes sense to come back and, and put everything right on the table because as, as of now, we know what we want in this, uh, in this section. So the purpose of today's request is to specifically address and approve, um, the request that we have an additional two hundred eight upscale luxury apartments, which will be developed as a complement to those that are presently under construction. And what I mean by that is you can see on this plan that there's a courtyard and amenities, uh, in the, within the courtyard. And those amenities in that courtyard will be shared by, uh, both, um, residential developments, should the board, uh, approve this idea. Um, it's a, it's a it's a little bit of an unusual way to get here, but the bottom line is that, um, the overall project and as I said, this is, uh, originally it was part of the Merrimack premium outlet property. Uh, Mr. Monahan, of course, was involved in, in the, uh, retail space up above. And this is cut, the last out parcel. One of the things that's interesting about this out parcel is, and, and I think it relates to this project is that of, it's part of the overall property that is encumbered and restricted in accordance with the Simon, uh, properties, uh, wishes. And that, and what I mean by that is they have design review, but they also restrict the uses. We, this site cannot compete with um, the uses for the Merrimack premium outlet. And in some regards, that limits what can be on this site. So for example, any retail that would be on this site, uh, would have to be of a nature and not in competition with something that is in, and, and a principal part of the, uh, Merrimack premium outlets. Um, but it is part of, excuse me. This particular twenty-acre lot was generally planned as part of the master plan. So you'll see that it's all um, common access ways and common drainage ways. And they're actually, uh, a coordinated effort in the design as well. Um, so what we are specifically asking for is we want to make sure that, uh, well, we are specifically asking for the right to do a me- a mixed-use project in the I two zone, which we already have a variance to do, but we are asking that that mixed-use project can specifically be, uh, to include the hotel, the restaurant space, the apartment complex that is under construction, and that's two hundred twenty-four rental units. And then the proposed second residential apartment complex, which would include two hundred eight residential, um, luxury apartment units. Essentially, the facts that support the first variance are all continued to be in place. Uh, it of course is, uh, located where it is and, and, and I think everybody knows about the infrastructure and all of that. Um, so I, unless the board would like, I, I don't go through all of that anymore. Um, the only other thing I can say is that we have found in, uh, Mr. Monahan has talked with, uh, abutters. And, uh, that includes, uh, some of the industrial abutters as well as some of the residential abutters. I, I think you actually have a letter in the file from Merrimack Premium Outlet Management. Um, and what, what he has found is that the prospect of additional upscale residential units is very interesting to all of the folks around. Um, and the reason is that they're just, it, it's a a kind of, uh, housing that's not, there aren't many. Um, it's new to the area and it's designed for, um, younger professionals, uh, and, and all of the surrounding uses think that it's a good idea and actually are, uh, uh, I, I can't really say they all support it. I'll let them speak for themselves. But we, so far we haven't heard negative, uh, in that regard. And Mr. Monahan could answer questions on that if, if you had any.
Absolutely. I, I actually do have a couple of quick questions.
Yeah.
So, so one essentially, if I'm understanding this correctly, all we're really doing is replacing an office building with an extension of the apartment housing?
Yes, well, it, yes. So all we're doing, either, either office use, retail use or garage, uh, parking garage would, would have, the next phase would have included either office, retail or parking garage in the location of this proposed residential complex. Um, technically what we're doing is asking you to approve the idea of this many residential units because um, the initial concept plan that we presented to you did not show this many and we just want to be, uh, upfront in that regard.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, sorry, Rich, I'm a little confused here. So you're not building the retail restaurant, office and parking garage? You, you want to build apartments instead?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's, I, I, maybe that's, I think what Rich was looking for. So we're not building the retail, you're not building restaurant office. Basically, all you want to do is stick another set of apartments in there.
Well, we're building the restaurant and the hotel as they are, those are under construction.
Sure, but instead of building retail and, and more restaurants over there, you're just want to build an apart- more apartments.
That's correct.
So I guess my question, my next question is actually to, uh, to, to, to Robert. Um, uh, given that the variance is, is for the same thing, the, the mixed use, um, does this really merit a need for another variance?
We felt yes because again, the original variance that was granted saw a layout that was dramatically different than what you're looking for on this, what you're looking at on the screen right now. The original variance, while it did not necessarily have a specific density included on it, was far less than what you're looking at now. So because of that, staff felt that the ZBA really needed to, I guess reaffirm that the variance that was granted six years ago meets the intent or this plan meets the intent of that variance by basically granting that variance again.
Yeah, but, okay.
I guess I was just kind of confused because I'm not, what I'm not sure is, is, uh, we, because we did, we didn't approve a variance with a specific density, did we?
No.
So.
It was not tied to a specific density, but it was tied to a, a layout that gave you a general expectation of what was going to be involved.
So this isn't mixed use anymore. This is two apartment comple- well, not really. It's two comple- plot, uh, two apartment complexes.
And a hotel and a restaurant.
If you're gonna, it, uh, so we're, so we're looking at this for the entire property, not just that building? Not just that area? Okay.
Correct.
That's, you know, that's a little thin if you ask me, but, okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment on that?
Sure.
Yeah, so it's actually mixed use in the sense of the Merrimack premium outlets as well. It, it started out as part of that project, but this twenty-acre site still has mixed uses by definition. Um, but as, as Robert has indicated, um, our initial concept showed office and less residential in this particular location and we just want to make sure that, um, we're moving in the right direction. Now I should also say that we understand that, uh, should this board be inclined to allow us to continue, we have to go back to the planning board and get a, an amendment to the conditional use permit, which will require all of the typical planning requirements and the whole series of, uh, requirements that a, a, a conditional use permit have. Um, so we recognize this is all subject to that process and then also subject to whatever the site plan process would be.
So that's what I was actually kind of curious. I, this doesn't, to me, this doesn't feel zoning, it feels planning. Um, and that's why I was kind of confused why, why this is brought back before the zoning. I mean, we'll absolutely hear it because it's here. Uh, but I just, I guess if, I, I, I'm confused why this is zoning and not planning, because it has to go through the planning board anyway.
Well, well, I think part of the answer is it's such an unusual circumstance that, uh, the zoning and planning office thought that we should come, come back to the zoning board and get permission and uh, we recognize that it's unusual. So, um, you know, we tend to agree with you, but we certainly understand. I think everybody has faced that same question is what I'm trying to say.
It, it is a unique circumstance and we appreciate that too. It's, it's really just, I, like I say, I mean, there's no real way for the ZB to just affirm the variance they granted, but that's essentially what we're asking you to do is reaffirm the variant you granted is still in line with the proposal that's now before the board, just because that, that's what they want to change it to. So we want to make sure that the ZBA felt that the spirit of the, of their dis- original decision is being met now.
Yeah, okay, but it's not though.
And I think that really, uh, the other thing that is going on here really is this concept is a little different than the original. So we, we believe we can demonstrate that it's still, even with the added residential units, it still meets the criteria for the variance, um, going step by step through the process.
And this change is because of, you don't want to put retail in there now or an office or?
Well, we, ma- may I answer that, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Yes. Well, I appreciate, to be honest with you, we would like very much to, uh, have the first plan. The economics did not work. Uh, Mr. Monahan, uh, marketed it for both retail and office. Um, the office market is basically non-existent now. Um, and we learned that the retail market for, for the to the extent that it's limited in the, in that we can't really have, uh, a retail that competes with, um, what's up the hill.
Okay.
Essentially, we, we are so limited in what the market will permit, it, it just doesn't work. And, uh, to give you an example, we actually had some people looking at office space. Uh, the office space, we, we were trying to pr- uh, price it as competitively as possible. They can go to other office space that's available for literally half the price. Uh, so we just found that it's not, it's not an economically viable program over the last three or four years. Um, what we have found is that there's a, a very strong demand for upscale apartments and I think the Lissesi Um what we have found is that there's a a very strong demand for upscale apartments and I think the Loses Group. Uh has a nice idea. We actually have a a rendering of what is going in. This is what's being built now. And this is the center area that would be the amenity section of the upscale apartments that are presently. Uh under construction. The site work has been uh started and I think the actual uh buildings are gonna start in this next couple of weeks. So your questions are very fair. I appreciate them and and I understand where you're coming from, but the. The bottom line is that the other plan isn't economically viable. So I can continue, uh Mister Chairman, or we certainly can answer further questions.
I guess uh before we get to the uh the five points here, does anyone else on the board have questions regarding this?
I have a general question and not so much pertaining to a decision here. The parking deck that you originally had had a thousand fifty spaces in it. Do those thousand fifty reappear anywhere on here?
I think I can answer that, Mister Chairman. Yeah, so they, no, they don't. Um there is parking and and uh. Dave Fenstermarker can give you the details on the parking, but there is parking on the lower level of each of these, all of these buildings or or the apartment buildings. Uh but there is no need for the parking garage uh that was shown uh because of the change in the uh. Components of of the development.
So the, yeah, this is Dave Fenstermarker from BHB. So what it comes down to is the original plan shown, the eleven fifty was needed to meet the parking demands. Of office and retail. So this plan has been adjusted and meets the the required amount of parking for these particular uses, so. There's about nine hundred and seventy spaces on the site, but it's a mix of. Under the deck of the apartments and some um surface parking, but the the garage is no longer needed as we have uh sufficient parking on site.
Great, thanks. So I guess part of my answer is parking's under the building that I don't see on the on the graph.
Correct. We have a hundred and fifty-eight spaces under this building and hundred and eighty spaces. So we try to. We we did maximize and Loses, you know, was willing to put in the premium price to make sure we had covered parking to limit the amount of surface parking.
Thank you.
Alright, I'm I'm okay to move on with the uh with the five points.
Alright, um so. I don't know if it's uh necessary at this point, Mister Chairman, to talk generally about the purposes of zoning. In in this particular set of circumstances, because of course it relates to several of the of the five criteria. Or if you would rather I I go to the criteria directly.
So uh we 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 are kinda required cuz of the way we've arranged it that we need to go through the five criteria. I mean, I understand what you're doing. I have no confusion whatsoever. Um but. It's i- i- it's kind of our protocol to go through them individually.
Absolutely, and that's fine. So what I will do is I will read uh um. Our summary and perhaps make a comment, but certainly I'm open to any questions and we we feel as though the. Circumstances um of the original variance. Continue to support this variance and have actually, we actually have new information because of the the. The passage of time and the change in demand and the the material changes in that regard uh that further support the the variance. So. First off, with regard to the public interest matter, the property has been granted a variance to permit a mixed use development. Different mix of components to include commercial office space, retail space, hotel and residential. The proposed mixed use development increases the residential component of the project. It would not be contrary to the public interest because the additional market rate rental apartments will provide an important component. In the housing stock for the town of Merrimack, their upscale and and luxury apartments as I as I mentioned. It will also support the com- commercial and industrial businesses in the immediate area. The Merrimack Master Plan supports the idea of diverse housing and recognizes that diverse housing is of is essential. To a viable community. This proposal accomplishes that goal of diverse housing. To be contrary to the public interest, the variance must unduly and in a market market degree. Conflict with the ordinance such that it violates the ordinance's basic zoning objections. This proposal will not alter the essential character of the local area. Because it the uses are presently permitted. The what I mean by that is the. The present apartment apartment complex is permitted by the older, by the earlier zoning order, uh zoning variance. This request is to increase the residential component will be lo- which will be located adjacent to residential uses. The proposal will not threaten public health, safety or welfare because there is sufficient and appropriate supporting infrastructure. Including roads, water and sewer. If there are any questions, I can answer uh them.
Rodney, did you have a question? Sorry, Patrick.
Uh just a comment. I I don't know. Well, actually, you know what? I'll save it for uh I'll save it when when we do our uh celebration.
Okay, we, I'm sorry.
Uh uh please uh move on to spirit of the ordinance.
With regard to the spirit of the ordinance, the requirements that a variance be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Coexist and are related to the requirement that the granting of the variance not be contrary to the public interest. So there's some overlap here. This particular lot is an out parcel between retail, residential and commercial slash industrial. Uses, businesses. The proposal, which is an increase to the residential component of a mixed use development. Will not adversely impact health, safety or welfare. It is not contrary to any of the purposes of zoning. But rather it accomplishes a stated purpose of diverse housing and mixed complementary uses at. At ex. Well, there's a, that's a, not a very good sentence. So I basically, it's a. Part of a mixed complementary uses and it complements the existing uses in the immediate area. It's immediately adjacent to uh the highway and other infrastructure in accordance with the master plan and the um. The the stated purpose of the master plan to have infill at denser areas. Uh where the infrastructure is there. The mixed use project is the highest and best use of the property and will be subject to the planning board review and approval. As a conditional use permit as well as a site plan. The property is a portion of the original development of Merrimack Premium Outlets. The proposed use is complimentary to the Merrimack Premium Outlets and there is no reason to limit the residential component. From a zoning standpoint.
Any questions from the board? Alright, I guess we can move on.
Substantial justice. Substantial justice inquiry requires that the ZBA examine any loss to the individual. By strictly enforcing the ordinance is outweighed by a gain to the general public. Here, the proposed use of additional residential. Units within the mixed use development is consistent with the abutting residential neighborhood, that is the apartment complex. Under construction and it's also consistent uh with the retail. Uses of the Merrimack Premium Outlet. Um and I and I might point out at this point that the the letter in support of this from the Merrimack Premium Outlet specifically says. That the residential and the hotel will support uh their needs at the Merrimack Premium Outlet. The proposed use is also appropriate given the infrastructure and given the surrounding infrastructure, roads, sewer and water. There is no reason to limit the residential component of the mixed use development. The loss of value to the property owner would be substantial. Strict enforcement. Reducing the residential component would not result in any gain to the general public. As applied to this property, there is no reason for strict enforcement of the ordinance, limiting the residential component. Uh es- essentially. This project is a viable project that supports the surrounding uses um as it is being shown here today. It's an economic benefit. One of the uh. One of the things that we will have to demonstrate at the planning board level is that it is fiscally beneficial to the town. We are very confident that we that will we'll be able to show that. Um so essentially, that's substantial justice.
Alright, any questions uh from the board on substantial justice? Alright.
With regard to the values of surrounding properties for the for the following reasons, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished. The existing mixed use development under construction is a substantial restaurant. Four-story hotel and four-story apartment complex. Immediately to the north is a single-family residential development. The present proposal is to permit another apartment complex to mirror and complement the existing apartment complex. It will be adjacent to an uh adjacent to existing residential development off-site. However, the distance and separation are substantial. There will be no impact to the values of adjacent residential properties. And the transition from business and commercial uses to residential is appropriate. The value of adjacent commercial and industrial properties will not be adversely impacted. Um I would like to say at this at this juncture that uh Mr. Monahan has spoken to a a few of the. Neighbors to the north in the existing single-family residential area. And I think I'm correct when I say, and certainly Mr. Monahan can correct me, um he has assured them. There is presently a berm. And in some discussions with some of the neighbors, Mr. Monahan has promised that he will put a fence. Uh to further separate this uh use from uh from the residential uh folks to the north. And I think Dave Fenstermarker can probably give you some detail on these this buffer area and the uh the separation of the. Of this site uh and the um residential to the north. I will also say that. In the original concept, the building. Located in the in the building, in the area that we are presently proposing the second department complex, the building was actually closer to the north. Um but Dave Fenstermarker can give you a little more detail there, uh please.
Yep, and uh this is Dave again. Uh and just an another piece of that was the original concept also showed uh full access. Uh driveway up here, which is now limited to it's a gated um fire access only, emergency access. So. That road is out there now. We're maintaining that and the building's being offset at least two hundred feet off the property lines. So none of this area up here within that two hundred feet is going to be um. The disturbed at all. We're gonna maintain the trees. Uh Tom's already tried to supplement it with some trees. I think uh. We didn't have the best year for it, so that's why we're talking about supplementing the berm with some stockade fencing. But really, the intent is to maximize the distance between um the residents and the apartments at this point. And enhance it further beyond what it is today.
So my question then is, uh why remove the the access to that road behind the second building?
Uh we we wanted to have one single point of access that was worked up with DOT and that also came up during. Um the planning board sessions too. Um so that eliminates all this traffic movement. Pop off of Continental Boulevard.
Oh, I see. There were concerns of congestion and.
Congestion here. That would have been a tough turn coming in and out and backing up and potentially backing up into the roundabout, so this. Uh signal has more than enough capacity to handle all the traffic, so that way we can run everybody through the industrial. Premium outlets intersection without bringing them over to causing that congestion in the residential area.
So I guess my my next question would be then, um what is to stop people from using that road anyway?
This one, it's gonna be gated. Has an emergency gate. So it's just the fire truck will come, there's a Knox box on it and they'll pop it open and it'll give them access to the back of the apartment building. In case there's a fire.
Okay, so.
It has a gate now.
Right.
So emergency vehicles will have a way of not requiring somebody to open the gate. They'll be able to do it themselves?
Yes, yep, they have a master key.
Ah, okay, that makes that makes sense.
Yeah, if you ever, yeah, if you ever notice next time, the most gates like that have two locks on them. One's the owner's lock and one is a. Universal lock for emergency vehicles.
Did not know that. Okay, um alright, I guess that's it for this. Anyone else on the board have questions? Alright, thank you very much. Uh feel free to move on to unnecessary hardship.
Okay, so the last one is the unnecessary hardship. Uh and owing to special conditions of the property. That distinguish it from other pro- other properties in the area, explain how no fair and substantial relationship exists. Between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to this property. So the general public purpose of the mixed use provisions. Within the Merrimack zoning ordinance is to allow mixed use development on undeveloped parcels. Where there is adequate transportation and utility infrastructure. And I think the master plan talks about that and the zoning ordinance itself, the ordinance itself actually states that as a as a purpose. The property meets the criteria and although it is not on Daniel Webster Highway. Um which is where the I one zone is. It is in an area of significant employment and commercial activity in the town of Merrimack. The property has direct access to a state roadway and is immediately at an exit for an interstate highway. The ZBA determined in two thousand fifteen that prohibiting residential uses on this property. Was not reasonably related to the general public purposes of the zoning ordinance. At that time, the ZBA determined there was no fair and substantial relationship sufficient to justify the prohibition. The applicant would suggest that the same is true today and and even further so, as we have discussed. There is no public purpose which will be accomplished by limiting the residential component on this property. The proposed use is a reasonable one. The proposed use is reasonable. In that the mixed use development is permitted by the original variance. Uh and that of course was determined to be a reasonable proposal. I suppose it's possible that additional residential units. Need to also be reasonable and it is our suggestion that that is the case, especially for this particular property. Uh it's reasonable because there's ample infrastructure, um but it's reasonable because it's also a compliment to the. Existing approved apartment complex and in the nature of things in the in the uh general overall scheme. The only question before the ZBA in this application is the ex- the extent of the res- residential component within the mixed use. In the context of surrounding uses on the site and in the context of surrounding uses off-site, the proposed use is reasonable. It's a transition both onsite and offsite. The proposed use supports an important need for housing diversity. The ZBA found that there was a hardship in two thousand fifteen and and that hardship warranted a variance. For mixed uses including residential uses. The same facts and circumstances exist now and are now perhaps stronger than ever. Demand for office space is down substantially. The market for retail space has changed dramatically over the last year. Merrimack Premium Outlets has substantial space and is approved for additional space. There are conditions and restrictions that apply to this parcel in order to protect the investment of Merrimack Premium Outlets. In view of all the circumstances, the proposed use and additional apartment building. Within the project is an appropriate and reasonable use. And and we're happy to answer questions on that as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh are there any questions from the zoning board uh regarding uh the unnecessary hardship or any of the bullets above? If not, I'll go ahead and open up the public portion. Patrick, you look like you wanna say something.
I I I have, I'm having a hard time with this. I'm having a hard time with this be in for a couple of reasons. One. This is, this is just apartment complexes. Okay, the yeah, there's a restaurant, there's a hotel. If you wanna try to shoehorn it into mixed use. Alright, I mean, not really in in my opinion, but again, it's just my opinion. One, two, um. you know, the whole, you can't put retail down there that competes with retail that's up on top of the hill, so that's limiting. I understand that that was five years ago when the scope of retail has changed, you know, now in the co- in the COVID era, as they say. But we didn't know, they didn't know that five years ago. They didn't know that six years ago when the when the initial um uh it when it was initially approved. I mean, it was initially approved for retail. And it so all of a sudden, over the last five years, something's changed and now you can't have competing retail? That 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 just doesn't sit right. That just doesn't make sense. Um and I had issue with this back in two thousand fifteen because it was a kind of a, it seemed like a carte blanche approval that we were giving. And now I'm starting to see that I may have been right about that, you know, about what I had said back in two thousand fifteen. Um this just strikes me as apartment complexes, guys. This really doesn't strike me as mixed use. I'm not comfortable with the fact that it's mixed use. I know I can't abstain, but I I don't know if I I don't know if I necessarily agree with this. Um I mean, we've got apartments on exit eleven, just built a bunch of there, apartments up on exit twelve. We've approved multiple housing complexes. Um you know, we we have another mixed use that's going in uh that we just approved earlier today, you know, for the awning, you know, that although that's only been a couple of apartments. I mean, really, how much how much of a how does housing shortage do we really have in Merrimack? I mean, that we need another set of apartments. Just my take on it. I I I don't necessarily agree with granting of the variance. I don't necessarily agree with substantial justice either, cuz I don't really see this as mixed use. I just see this as apartments with a restaurant and a hotel. But again, like I said, if you wanna call it mixed use, i- I think it's thin. It's just my take on it.
My uh uh the only thing I'm gonna say is uh and and my 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 assumption is on this cuz the I would never call the uh exit eleven uh development um quote-unquote luxury. Um but this, I'm assuming that the idea behind this is to market to uh the six thousand or so employees over in the Fidelity office right across the street, since there's a a lot of people that 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 commute there. Um I don't, I I mean, I I could make assumptions all day long on this.
Right.
Um but I I think that I would certainly agree with the the changing of the way uh things have been over this last year. I mean, I was at the uh outlets not too long ago and there's there are some vacancies, so I can understand it's hard to fill retail space. Um
Yeah, but the whole idea of we can't have competing retail for what's up there really, I mean, and like like I said, if something's come to light in the last five or six years that says you can't do that, we didn't, they didn't know that five or six years ago. And I'm not saying five or six years ago they were gonna build apartments anyway. I'm sure that their intention was to build a a true mixed use where it was gonna be offices and a and and retail down there. I'm sure that that was the truly was their plan. But I mean, to 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 throw out, we can't have competing retail, really? Doesn't make sense. But again, that's just my, you asked me, that's that's my take on what I'm seeing, at least from my side, so.
Can I just comment on that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Yeah, so I understand where you're where you're coming from, Mr. Dwyer. And and really, you your statement is exactly how we feel. We would love to be able to build these things. And initially, we recognized that uh there were some restrictions on uh the retail opportunities, but we thought there were enough retail opportunities uh that would create a demand. Um what we now know, after five years of marketing and all, is that there isn't. Um and and it's just a a practical decision right now. Now, I I um I understand that your characterization as a an apartment complex, and let's let's just say that that's um accurate for the moment. I I think it is mixed use because I think it's still part of the Merrimack Premium Outlets, but let's say that it's uh the the component for residential is larger. Uh we certainly agree there. I think part of what we're also saying is that this particular parcel, this twenty acres, is a very unusual piece. It's a it's a lone piece among developed area. We have uh campus offices to the south. We have campus type in Park Industrial. Uh to the west, we have uh premium outlets to the east and residential to the north. And in view of all of those circumstances, this is actually a very unique place where dense residential is very appropriate. And in terms of the need for the region, the Nashua Regional Planning Commission estimates that the demand for housing units is uh is very strong. The region needs over five thousand uh units. Uh right now, the vacancy rates on apartments in particular is very low. Um Mr. Monahan is involved in apartments in Nashua and in uh in other parts of the state. He can tell you that the demand is extremely high and that the region definitely needs more apartments. Um obviously, we're not gonna build these unless somebody thinks there's a demand and the La Cessi Group thinks there's a demand. So I appreciate your comments, but I think I think things have changed so much in the last five years um that this is an appropriate and reasonable use for this particular parcel. Uh it's a it's a very important thing that it's close to the highway and that it has infrastructure. That that separates it. It's it's unique for those purposes which are important purposes right now.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh I just want to relay a a point conveyed by the community development director. We appreciate the argument that this is a part of the premium outlets development, but this in reality is a standalone parcel. Uh so we do not, excuse me, we do not agree that it is a mixed-use part of the premium outlets development as a whole. It is a it is a standalone lot.
I mean, that makes perfect sense to me. Um my some
This is Ben, can I add a comment?
Yep.
I I can appreciate the concerns around mixed use versus apartments, et cetera. But by the same token, I think the reality is, in our world, the developers don't build to what the demand is in the marketplace. And I think we would all agree that in the last eighteen months, let alone five years, the demand side has changed significantly. And we've all experienced it. We've all suffered through the uh various uh lockdowns and and uh limitations due to COVID. Uh one thing I think is very important, which uh the petitioner uh had mentioned is, and and I think we see it, you know, throughout a lot of Southern New Hampshire is there's a need for residential housing. And um uh there's no reason why, in my opinion, the developer can't build to the need. And I don't think we should expect a developer to build where there is weak or no demand and incur huge losses. So in a in a long-winded way, I I support this proposal.
I I'm actually completely in concurrence with you, Ben.
Thank you.
I, yeah, um. Already at this point, um I do have a hand raised, so um what I'm gonna do now is open the public portion. So uh during this, I would ask that anyone um who's uh dialing in or wants to make a comment either for or against uh this petition, please dial in. And then dial star nine um to to raise your hand, so I know to call on you. Um so I do have a caller with the last three digits four, four, two. Uh would you please dial star six to unmute yourself and then just state your name and address uh for the record?
Good evening. My name is Michael Mills. My address is Seven Arbor Street here in Merrimack. And I'd like to address the uh notice that I sent to the zoning board about the uh notice that of the public notices that appeared in the newspapers and what the defects were that uh caused me to think that the meeting should be uh canceled until the problems were corrected. And I think it pertains to the ongoing, any ongoing discussion about this um project.
Okay, uh before you get started, um
Sure.
I obviously cannot see you, but can you raise your right hand? And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Mills. And if you wanna go ahead and uh um state what you would like regarding the the note or the petition.
Okay, I would appreciate that. Uh cuz that was the notice in the newspaper stated that the uh petitioner seeks to have a higher residential density than was originally approved in two thousand fifteen. Uh it was quite contrary to the previous two notices for that we've already heard this evening, where in great detail it was described as to what was being proposed, going into basically how many feet and inches the setbacks were and what was required and and uh was what was being proposed. And the the first thing they noticed about the notice in the newspaper was that none of that information was in there. Um there were several errors that appeared in there. Um I went to look online, the lot number that was referenced in the description in the notice. That lot has been subdivided into four condominium units. Each of those, three of those units are owned by a company called or business called Merrimack Parcel A LLC. Unit number one is owned by a company called Slate Merrimack Acquisition LLC. Um Slate Merrimack Acquisition LLC is not mentioned anywhere in the notice of the meeting. It identifies the owner of the property as being um Merrimack Park Place Condominium as the owner. Park Place Condominium owns only three of the four units here. It's a condominium. The land is commonly owned by all four units. Slate Merrimack Acquisition LLC has not requested any issue to come before the zoning board. So my first question is, you can't, I don't believe that you can hold a hearing on three quarters of a piece of property. You have to have the hearing on all four condominium units. Number two, the owner of the property is identified in the notice as being Merrimack Park Place Condominium. Uh tonight, uh it was introduced that Tom Monahan is the owner of the property. Tom Monahan is either the owner of the property or Merrimack Park Place Condominiums are the owners of the property. Can't have two owners on the same property, and if you do have two owners, they should both be specified. Uh lot one ninety-one oh two is no longer taxed by the town. Uh talking to the town assessor, uh it was my understanding that if you wanna talk about their property, you have to talk about each of the four individual units that make up the condominium itself. The notice should have said that on units two, three, and four, U-two, U-three, U-four, this is what we're proposing. It cannot state that on lot one ninety-one oh two, this is what we're proposing. Lot one oh two, look at the tax record. They're paying zero for taxes. All of the taxes and everything related to the property is now divided into condominium units, U-one, U-two, U-three, U-four. Um I have yet to see any notice anywhere that uh uh someone has been appointed to represent the condo association. Someone's been appointed to represent McPark Place Condominium, but not the Condominium Association, all four units. So anyone appearing before the zoning board saying, I represent uh Merrimack Park Place Condominium, is only representing three of the four units, and I don't think you can rule on something, on a piece of property unless all the owners agree to that. Um the notice, again, although the previous two things for 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 garage setback and and an awning went into great detail, the notice does not state where the higher residential density would be located. There's nothing in that notice that says that there's going to be an additional building built. There's nothing in that proper, in that notice that says that uh um the 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 commercial and retail space previously approved is no longer going to be allowed. Not not, you know, I'm using the wrong word, not allowed, but that that is being deleted from the plan. The notice should have gone into specific detail saying, this is what we're doing. We're building a new apartment building, an additional apartment building. Doesn't say that. The notice should say, we are, the the proposal is to delete the commercial and retail space. It doesn't say that. Uh it does not state that the original design, a concept for vertical mixed use would not be constructed. This is one of the highlights. If you look over the last notes, this is one of the highlights of the plan, was that this is gonna be a vertical mixed-use building, and this is gonna be beautiful and everybody's gonna love that.
I I just wanna address a couple of things that you you mentioned, Mr. Mills, uh cuz you did bring up some some good points. Um for the part about uh discussing owners of the property, uh I can tell you that we do hear cases frequently where it's not the owner presenting. Um
Oh, sure.
And 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 also, and so there uh and a lot of times it is a company presenting, um and we're just speaking with a person from the company. Um the second thing was
condominium owner, is that the owner or is it Tom Moran, Monahan, the owner? You can't have Tom Monahan stand up and say, I am the owner of the building, without publishing that in the note, in the notice. In the notice, you say Merrimack Park Place Condominium is the owner. Who is the owner? Which one?
So we can, we we can certainly get to that, cuz the the thing is that I'm I'm going to relay these questions then uh to the petitioner. Uh but I just wanted to address them as best I can first, so we can get to that part. Um the second thing is
here in the town, in the state of New Hampshire for uh since nineteen seventy-two. Um, okay, so it does not state that two hundred and eight additional apartments are being requested. It doesn't say that anywhere in the notice. That's
Because that's not what they're applying for. And I I I think that if you take a look at the variance that they're applying for, what they want is the ability to get a mixed-use permit. Um that is a very uh generic thing to do. What they're doing is they're presenting us with why they're looking to get that permit. However, it's the it's the permit they want, not the apartments. So we should be very clear in what it is that the petitioner is looking to obtain. They wanna be able to have a mixed-use permit to develop. What they develop is is only relevant to uh the presentation. Um however, this is all gonna go before the planning board. What they're basically asking us is if they have permission to go to the planning board. So a lot of your questions are great questions, but they're not for the zoning board. They're for the planning board, and I would encourage you to bring those to the planning board. Because with the other petitions tonight, the other petitions tonight, um those were variances for specific things. One was a variance for a garage. It was a variance for the ability to build a garage. The second was for a variance because they wanna build an awning. That was necessary to put. In this case, this is a mixed-use permit that they want to then take up with the planning board. So these issues that uh we're discussing tonight, for the most part, are planning board-related issues. They're just to back up the reason why they need a mixed-use permit. So they do need a mixed-use permit because they're building a hotel, a restaurant, and apartments. And those are not the same use. So for that reason, they would need this permit to continue constructing. So um although, like I said, your questions are important, um and they certainly do need to be answered, I don't think this board is the right place for them. I think you'd wanna, cuz it one of two things will happen. Either the variance or will be granted, and then they will need to take those details to the planning board, in which case the planning board would be able to answer your questions very well. Um or two, the variance does not pass, in which case the the it's kind of a, it's kind of a moot subject and we're back at the drawing board. So that's, I just, I didn't want you to, I don't want you to relay all your questions and then realize we can't answer them.
Well, I'm 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 referencing the memorandum dated March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one from Timothy J. Thompson to uh uh to the chair and members of the zoning board of adjustment. And in that, it says that the petitioner seeks to add additional residential des- uh density of an additional two hundred and eight units.
It it, right, and that that absolutely can be in the memo, however, it's not pertinent to what we're voting on. And that's what I think important, is that those details, although they're nice to know, they're not necessarily relevant to the variance. They're only to back up the variance they're looking for. They're not looking for a variance explicitly for apartments or explicitly for units. They're looking for a variance that will allow them to ask the planning board for these things.
Then then may I ask a question then? Why, why were pictures presented showing the new apartment building? If that should only appear before the planning board, shouldn't the residents of the town of Merrimack know that there's another building that's being discussed for an additional two hundred and and some odd units?
Absolutely.
Over the meeting, so they can attend the meeting and know that this isn't just somebody looking for a couple more units. This is someone looking for uh an increase in density from uh was This is someone looking for an increase in density from, was it 11% to 20, 11% to 22%? The notice doesn't say that. The notice, all it says is somebody wants to increase the number of apartments. It's got to be in more detail. It has to show the name of the owner. Either Tom Monahan is the owner, or Merrimack Park Place Condominium is the owner. It has to say that the petitioner can only appear before the board representing the condominium association. And it does not include, the notice does not include, nor do any of the documents anywhere state that Slate Merrimack Acquisition is part of this proposal, and they are part of the property. They own part of that property. They have to say, "I want this," and they haven't said that, and the notice hasn't said that. The notice hasn't said that.
What I'll do is I'll ask, I'll ask our, I'll ask Robert, who's on the call as well, to kind of answer some of those more specific questions about the property owner, since those are not ones I can answer for you. So, Robert, do you-
Yeah, we talk about zoning, and zoning actually is what the commercial and retail space governs. I think, whatever the hearing is, and this gets pushed off from one board to another board that's been going on since 2015, where originally it started off as, I don't know, it had this here, 150 units, and now we're going to be up someplace around 425.
Okay, I'm going to ask now that Robert speaks, because he has some of the answers to your questions that I do not have.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely.
The main point that the ZBA needs to consider right now is that earlier in this meeting, they already determined that the notice that was issued met the letter of the law. So at this point, if there is any further challenge to that, then I would encourage Mr. Mills to file an appeal to whatever decision the board makes when that time comes, if he chooses to. But as of right now, the board's already determined that the notice that was issued was sufficient.
Well, and I very much appreciate you explaining to me the difference between Tom Monahan as the owner and Park Place Condominium as the owner. I guess we have several owners. And I certainly appreciate you explaining to me the difference between Merrimack Park Place Condominium being a four-unit condominium, but not identifying the other owner. I don't think I need to appeal this. I think I need to look at the zoning board and ask them to make sure that notices that they publish clarify the issue, so that people looking at the notice realize that this is a hearing that they should attend. I appreciate, I'll let someone else call in, and then I will call back, and I want to address the issues in the granting continuation pages zoning application. So I think there are other people that may want to speak as well.
What do you mean by granting, granting?
Well, I'm looking here, continuation pages, zoning application, Merrimack Park Place LLC. It goes on, the first thing is granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest because they, I've heard repeatedly this evening that we're talking about luxury apartments. There's three levels of apartments. There's workplace apartments, there's marketplace apartments, and there's luxury apartments. Are we talking about marketplace? Are we talking about luxury apartments? If you look at the granting of the variance, they talk about marketplace apartments. When they testified tonight at the hearing, they are now luxury apartments. There's a difference between them.
So when we discussed this before, it was luxury apartments, because I presided on the board at that point, Tom. I do recall this case. So this is not new information to me, so I apologize if it seems new to you. And I'm also going to reiterate also what Robert said. If you feel that there's an issue with the variance itself, certainly you can bring it up with the office in terms of having an appeal done. But for right now, we as the board and the town office both feel that the notice was sufficient.
Okay, I'm also questioning both the notice. I'm looking at the granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest because-
Okay.
Would not be contrary to the public interest because the additional market-rate rental apartments. Are they market-rate rental apartments, or are they luxury apartments? I'm reading this from your papers. Which is it? I mean, I don't understand. Would be contrary to public interest because the additional market-rate apartments will provide an important component in housing stock for the town of Merrimack. I'm not sure what the demand is in the town of Merrimack for luxury apartments. I'm sure that there's a demand for marketplace apartments, workplace apartments. What is being proposed here? You know, I'm reading from your papers.
Right, and I think that Mr. Leonard did a fantastic job both explaining what was being built and then showing us pictures of what was being built. So if you had been watching, you would have seen exactly what they're looking to build. Yeah, so unfortunately-
So they're looking to build luxury apartments. So the filing of this granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest because was filed falsely. It says marketplace.
Okay, I really do think that we're kind of starting to stray off the purpose of the variance, and in this case, the variance is a mixed use. We're not, we're not really discussing what kind of apartments they're building. We're discussing the need for a mixed-use permit. And the reality is, we did, we did already approve this. And the reason why we're rehearing this is because there is a material change in what was presented a few years ago when we heard this and what's being presented now. However, the objective part of this is that the permit's the same. We're talking about the same exact variance, with just the details are a little bit different.
Yeah, I have a question. Are we talking about market-rate apartments, or are we talking about luxury apartments?
I don't, so what was shown to us was luxury apartments. However, and I will say this again, that is not relevant to what we're voting on tonight. However, those are questions you could bring to the planning board. We're just, we don't care what kind of apartments they are. We just care that this is the purpose behind the use permit. That's all we care about.
The zoning application under the spirit of the ordinance, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because the proposed use is complementary to Merrimack Premium Outlets, and there's no reason to limit the residential component of the mixed-use development. Is it the zoning board's position that there is no reason to limit residential components of mixed-use developments?
At this point in time, we feel that we have sufficient evidence to discuss the multi-use permit that we're talking about. Not, again, this is not about density. This is really about the permit.
So Rich, if I understood your question, Mr. Mills, there, as far as mixed use, when it comes to mixed use, there is no, as far as I'm aware, and Robert probably can verify this, there is no correlation between square footage used for restaurant, used for office, used for apartments, used for hotel. There's no, as far as I know, there's no specific square footage. There's no, hey, if you're going to have, you know, 1,000 square feet of retail, you need to have, you can only have 25 apartments. There is no set law to that, that I'm aware of. There's no set criteria to that. It's pretty much, you know, you can have one apartment, one restaurant, one office, you know, and it can all be a total of 5,000 square feet, and that's considered mixed use, as far as, what I understand from the criteria.
Okay. I'm looking under the granting of the variance would not diminish the values of surrounding properties because it's easy to make a blanket statement. May I ask the zoning board, has any study been done as to what effect, if any, this additional building would have on, if this zoning passes, zoning change, zoning request change passes, what effect that may have on the residential neighbors surrounding this project? Has any study been done pertaining to that?
Unfortunately, that criteria is rather subjective. We could certainly bring in real estate agents that would say, "This will absolutely improve property values, and here's a list of reasons why," and we could, I'm sure we could find a Realtor or two that could say the opposite. It's a rather, unfortunately, it's a rather subjective criteria. The reality is, is that we approve this, and they get a permit, or they have the ability to get a permit, and then discuss this with the planning board. We deny this, and they can still build apartments. It doesn't, it's, so I mean, I guess if your concern is having apartments there, either way, they have the ability to build it, and that's not what we're discussing tonight.
May I say that you would not call a Realtor and to give their opinion, you would engage the services of a licensed appraisal company to come in and do a study to determine the value of the properties that are here now, and what effect the granting of the increasing the zoning, the increasing the density of residential units would have on surrounding property. It would be a licensed appraisal company that would do that, and not a Realtor.
You may be right. However, what we're talking about is the permit.
There was an officer with the board of Realtors. I know I'm right. The proposed use is reasonable, is a reasonable one because demand for office spaces-
Nope, I apologize. I hit the wrong button. Can you please dial star six, Mr. Mills? Mr. Mills, can you please dial star six?
Okay.
I apologize. I hit the wrong button. I'm sorry.
That's okay. My voice is delicate. I'm sorry. But my final point is that being in real estate for, since 1972, I've seen ups and downs and goods and bads. I don't think that we, the town should not be making decisions based on what the commercial demand is, or what the office demand is, when this property was purchased, what's really changed. There's not much that's changed. Premium Outlets always had a say as to what the, what the commercial uses of the property could be. That hasn't changed. Yeah, office space is down right now. Let's, once this coronavirus is over, let's see what happens next. Let's not grant this variance based on, "My God, look at this. You can't put any commercial space. You can't do this. We're going to make the hotel smaller." Yeah, let's look at this and really make some reasonable decisions as to what our neighborhood is going to look like. What we're going to see when we look out our window at these buildings four and five stories high with another 500, 600 people being a neighbor? No, the density does not have to change. The density is high enough. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Leonard, are there any of those points that you would like to address?
Yes, so first off, if the chair is interested, I can explain the ownership a little bit. In particular, I would say that the owners are properly listed in the application and notice, and that, I think I said, Mr. Monahan is a principal of the companies that own this property. There are four condominium, commercial condominium units.
Okay.
One of them is this vacant area. Mr. Monahan's companies own the other two, that include the restaurant and the hotel. Slate is, is the group that is owned by La Cessi. It is the development that is presently underway, and Mr. Terry Field is with that group. This is a, it is a condominium for purposes of developing and financing, and that's really the only reason. It's not a, what people are used to in the sense of a condominium. But all of the owners are correct. Mr. Monahan is a principal, and there's no issue with the notice. And actually, I will also say that Mr. Monahan is the declarant, and he continues to control the association, because it is still not, it hasn't been passed over to the owners. It's still in development process. I think, I think that's really the main thing I would say here, and my earlier comments on the reasonable uses, and this is a reasonable use, we would stick by those comments. This is really just a residential component of a development that is underway. And what we are doing is substituting a residential component for what would otherwise be offices, retail, or parking garage. And those are part of the mixed use.
I think that, I think that we're all on this, when I say all, I think the zoning board and the community development officer are on the same page when it comes to the notice being accurate. I do thank you for the additional information. I think it's helpful. I think what I'm going to do is ask if there's anyone who's not spoken, who's looking to speak in regards to this testimony, to please dial in and hit star nine, and I'll give it another minute. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public portion, and Robert, it looks like you have something to add.
Just real quick, one, I just want to make sure the board does have the letter from Mr. Costco that should probably be read into the record.
Absolutely. I'll go ahead and read that, and thank you. So I do have a letter here from Vincent Costco, GM of the Merrimack Premium Outlets. And he states, "Dear Tim, I write you today on behalf of Merrimack Premium Outlets and Simon Development to show support for the Monahan Development Project at the base of our entryway, where they will be building a hotel and restaurant, and where La Cess hopes to build a total of 400-plus luxury-type apartments, 200 or so more than originally approved, 224 units. This project, once completed, will bring much anticipated activity and life to the acreage adjacent to our shopping center. It will provide for overnight accommodations requested by many of our annual tourism shoppers, and it will provide an added value to some of the new local shops that have opened and will open at the center. We ask you and your colleagues to give this project a green light, so there's no further delay in opening this land up to potential shoppers and customers of the outlet and its neighboring businesses in Merrimack. Thank you for your consideration." And thank you, Robert, for reminding me. I definitely needed that reminder.
Certainly. And the last thing I just want to do is, it's been a while, it's been the testimony and all that, but I do want to reiterate one more time for everybody that the reason the petitioner is here, yeah, before the board tonight, is solely for the increased residential density on the site.
And I figure I should just ask again, that number was not published on the original variance, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So with that being said, I'll go ahead and close the public portion, and I'll entertain a motion, or any questions from the board?
You sure, there was no one else? We had two, it looks like we had two calls.
Did we?
You want to make sure you cleared out the queue.
He did. Nobody raised their hand. I've been watching the screen.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I didn't see anyone raise their hand. Yeah, so, any questions or comments from the board, or do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, if I could, please. I make a motion that the Merrimack Parcel A LLC petitioner and Merrimack Park Place Condominium owner be granted the variance under section 2.02.4D of the zoning ordinance to permit a mixed-use development conditional use permit to be sought from the planning board at a higher residential density than was originally approved by variance in 2015 on a lot in the I-2 Industrial District. The parcel is located at 10 Premium Outlets Boulevard in the I-2 Industrial Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map 3C, lot 192-02, case number ZBA 202105, with the conditions that the petitioner shall obtain approval for an amended conditional use permit from the planning board to allow the addition of the second apartment building up to 205 additional multifamily residential units, and the petitioner shall obtain the site plan approval from the planning board for the second apartment building following approval of the mixed-use condition of the permit.
I'll second.
All right, so I heard a motion from Rodney- So, I heard a motion from Rodney, seconded by Lynn. Rodney, are you in favor?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, just a point of order. I think, I think our request is for two hundred and eight, and it might be a typo in the, in the memo from Mr. Thompson.
Yep, you're seeing the exact same thing I was about to comment. We will get that corrected for the notice decision to reflect the condition being up to two hundred and eight additional units.
Just out of curiosity, is that-
Do I need to repeat that?
No, no, my, my question actually to Robert, is that, is that necessary to put in the variance?
Yeah, they, they are requesting the two oh eight, so we, Rod, you basically say that you've amended your condition to say up to two hundred and eight, so two hundred and five, and I'll address it, we'll take care of it in the decision letter. Their request is for two hundred and eight, and Tim inadvertently wrote two oh five.
I see two eight on my screen.
Right, but if we go to the bottom of Tim's memo, under the first proposed condition, in paren, in parentheses, he wrote up to two hundred and five, which would short them three from the, from their request, and kind of make for a conflict.
So, the cheat sheet has a different number on it, then?
Right. Yeah, yes. Yeah, the cheat sheet-
Cheat sheet probably has the correct information, but it's Rod's reading. He doesn't have that, so he's reading off of Tim's memo, which has the typo.
I apologize, I, I didn't even notice, because I'm reading off my copy, which says two oh eight, so just, thank you.
Casey probably caught it and fixed it.
All right, so motion made by Rodney, seconded by Lynn. Rodney, are you in favor?
Yes, I am.
Lynn, are you in favor?
I am.
Patrick, are you in favor?
No.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
I as well am in favor. So, the variance does pass four zero one, or is it four one zero?
Four one zero.
Four one zero. And, again, the, the appeals process is thirty days, so... But other than that, it sounds like you're good to go.
Thank you very much for all of your diligence.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you guys very much.
Have a good evening.
Take care.
Thank you, board.
Okay, discussion, possible action regarding other items. Does anybody have any news for us?
Is somebody supposed to have news?
I don't know. I'm sitting here in my basement, just, you know. Anything new from community development, Robert?
I've got nothing of interest to discuss.
All right, well-
Approve, approve the minutes.
Do I hear second?
Second.
All right, motion made by Patrick, seconded by Ben. Patrick, you in favor?
Yes.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Lynn, are you in favor?
I'll abstain.
Rodney, are you in favor?
I'll abstain, I haven't seen the meeting.
All right, I'm in favor, so, three zero two, it still passes.
I thought you couldn't abstain.
You can from the minutes, if you did not watch the, you just can't from a petition. Or, I should say, Robert, can you correct me if I'm wrong there?
Yeah, it's, the minutes vote is fine, but it's when you're dealing with an actual vote, or I don't know, on a petition, it's when you do not.
All right.
All right, so who wants to give the final motion?
I'll make a motion that we, I'm sure I'm-
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Rodney, seconded by Lynn. Anyone not in favor?
I, I'm not, I, I, I'm not in favor. I want to stick around and talk for another hour, too.
April pools.
Good night, guys.
Take care, everyone.
Everyone have a good one, thanks.
Bye. Have a great April.
You, too.
Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings, to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack Municipal Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion-
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.